...for one minute. Secondly, to create reminders by putting something in the backseat of their car so that every time they get to their destination, they reach for a computer, an iPad, a purse, or a cellphone. And then lastly, we want them to take action, and that is if you see a child alone in a car, to call 911. Our emergency services personnel are here. The police chief, as the fire chief would tell you, we want you to call because it could be the difference in life and death. We're here to recognize six heroes that rescued a four-year-old in your community that was left in a hot car, and they called 911. It would have been much easier for them to say, "I don't want to get involved," but instead, they were courageous, and they called and rescued this child from heat stroke. Safe Kids Worldwide is our national office. Their office, in conjunction with Safe Kids North Carolina, Safe Kids Cumberland County, and our city officials, are here to thank each of them for their act of valor. We're joined by the mayor, the police chief, the fire chief, our Safe Kids Cumberland County director, and we've got certificates for each one of these individuals. We're also joined by Dr. Norman Collins, Sr., and his family experienced the tragedy of a child left in a hot car when he lost his three-month-old grandson Bishop. He's here to acknowledge the impact that each of you have made by taking a chance and calling 911. So we have two certificates for each of them, and they read, the first one, Certificate of Appreciation. For the valiant act of rescuing a child at risk of heat stroke, your effort is hereby recognized by Commissioner Wayne Goodwin and the North Carolina Department of Insurance. And from Safe Kids Worldwide, the Badge of Courage. This certifies that your valiant act of rescuing a child at risk of heat stroke, your effort is hereby recognized by Safe Kids Worldwide as an act of heroism. You are each heroes, and they're signed by Safe Kids Worldwide and Safe Kids North Carolina. So I would like to acknowledge each one of them. The first one that actually got the child out of the vehicle is Andre Semper. Thank you so very much. Our second one is Nikisha Dunham. Our third one, Tanya Semper. Our fourth one is Annette Owens. Our fifth one is Eileen Hawkins. And we have one gentleman that was not able to be here tonight, and we would like to recognize him, and that's Jesus Montez. So please join me in congratulating these heroes. And Jesus was able to join us. So Jesus, we would like to recognize you for your heroic act, too. So thank you very much for joining us. Let's give him a hand. Thank you very much.
If I could ask Aiden Salazar to come down front. Guess why you're here? Congratulations. Aiden has earned the rank of Eagle Scout, and quite an accomplishment. In fact, you can proudly quote to me some facts about the numbers of presidents who were Eagle Scouts and that kind of thing. Quite an achievement for a young man to make, and I would like to present you with a certificate of excellence, and also a coin. Congratulations on your hard work as Eagle Scout. We had another former city councilman come into the room. Senator Meredith, pleasure to see you. Thank you so much for what you do for us at General Assembly. And Councilmember Applewhite is here also, former councilmember Applewhite. Councilmember Hearst, you're next. And Mr. Trey Bright, if you would come up. Okay, I'm sorry. That's what that deer in the headlights look was. I'm sorry, Mr. Hearst. Ms. Jensen.
Come sit with us, come stand with us. I got to do a really neat thing last weekend. I took my family up to Washington and watched a hundred phi Pi Kappa's come in on bikes, and I got to sit on Capitol Hill in the yard and watch them show up on their bikes. They started from California, and they rode all the way to Washington, D.C. Very, very impressive.
Is that Mr. Bright?
Trey Bright is a resident of Fayetteville. He does live in District One, and he rode this for his nephew, his cousin that has disabilities. And what they did when they ran, I mean, when they biked, they stopped and helped. And you can look up at the pictures. They were with disability, people with disabilities every day, and did camps with them, and had Friendship Days, I think is what they called it. So here he is at Capitol Hill with his bike, and this is his cousin right here that he did it for. And his cousin is a year older than you?
A year younger.
A year younger than, and his mother is in the audience, Judy. And his cousin lives in Durham. So thank you for what you do. You make Fayetteville proud, and congratulations. And I have a coin for you from the mayor, not one of mine, and a certificate for you.
All right, well, I just want to thank all of you for having me. It's definitely, it was a long ride, but it was a great trip, but it's definitely good to be back in Fayetteville. Definitely missed it, was thinking about this great community every day on the bike. But I am getting about ready. I kind of wish I could go back because it was such a great experience. It was about, on average, 80 miles a day we rode every morning. But then, once we got to those friendship visits and got to see all the neat people and make just life-lasting memories, it really was worth it. And I just want to thank you all again, and thank my parents for coming, my family, and then my best friends over there. So y'all have a good one, be safe.
At this time, we have the opportunity to honor some of our firefighters. Firefighters who placed first in the Hazmat Challenge competition held in South Atlantic Fire Rescue Expo and Conference Center. At this time, we're going to name some firefighters that participated in this team. When your name is called, please come up and receive the certificate from the mayor.
And chief major.
And chief major. Glad to have you. Lieutenant Patrick McGardle. Lieutenant Johnny Deal. The certificates of recognition, they read, for this, for your contribution to the success of the Fayetteville Fire Emergency Management Department Hazardant Material Teams Achievement of First Place in Hazmat Challenge Competition. Thank you again, chief major and your team, for bringing back Fayetteville with the first-place prize in the Hazmat Challenge Competition. Again, thank you.
At this time, we'll move into the item 6.0, which is public hearings. Any Fayetteville resident, public forum, I'm sorry, yes, public forum. Any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Unfortunately, due to policy restrictions, the forum will be, may not last any longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes. Unfortunately, we have more than 10 speakers equaling 30 minutes, so if I could just ask everyone to be concise and to the point, everyone has an opportunity to speak. If not, we will have to cut it off at 30 minutes. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with a city clerk prior to the start of the meeting. If you're here to speak on an item that may be under the public hearing section, we ask that you reserve your comments until the public hearing. So when you hear your name called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the light change to red, your time has expired. And again, due to council policy, we are unable to extend the time any longer than 30 minutes or three minutes each. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, would you call the first resident?
Yes, sir. Mayor, our first speaker is Ms. Cassandra Ship. Our second speaker signed up is Ms. Mary Mack. Ms. Mary Mack.
Welcome, Ms. Mack.
My name is Mary Elmac. I live at 5471 Maplewood Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28314. Good evening, everyone. I am here to talk about Chestnut Hills, community in which I live, and I've been living there for 40, about 45 years. We have a problem with water in a lot of the cul-de-sacs, and I know that there is a problem in Fayetteville with flooding, but we've been having this problem for the past 10 or 15 years. It has recently gotten worse. We have been told that there are beavers blocking the stream behind Chestnut Hills, yet no one has seen a beaver. So we're very concerned because a lot of the water washes into the homes of a lot of the older citizens, and they really have a problem. It's like a flood. I have pictures here showing dog houses floating, boats floating, all kinds of things are floating in the water. And it comes up so high that it gets in the back of some of the homes that are in the Chestnut Hills area. We would like for you all to look at this situation and try and do something about it. This past weekend, you all know, we had a lot of rain, and of course, it was flood. It was flooded again. It is very hard to live in an area like that where you can't, when it rains very hard, you can't go out your door. You can't get out of your house because it's raining so hard. The reason I am here this evening is because we have had so many complaints about the water, about the flooding, and nothing has been done about it. If it is, I'm not aware of it. I do think the past councilpersons, or person that worked, because they did begin to show us that there were some things that they could do to try and help us, and we're looking forward to seeing that done. We are concerned about our neighborhood, we are taxpayers, and we expect the best from the city of Fayetteville, and I'm sure that we're not the only area that's flooded and having problems with flooding, but we do expect to hear from you because we pay our taxes like anyone else pays their taxes. Councilman Wright is our representative, and he had seen the pictures. I don't know when he showed them to you, but he has seen these pictures of the flooding in Chestnut Hills. So I do hope that something will be done about this. I do thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mack.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Joel Grimm. Mr. Joel Grimm.
Thank you. My name's Joel Grimm. I live at 417 Edinburgh Drive in Fayetteville. My wife and I moved here five years ago. We're really enjoying the city of Fayetteville. We bought a house, working on our house in a beautiful neighborhood. Unfortunately, we have an individual in our neighborhood that has multiple single-axle trailers parked in their front yard, their commercial trailers in a residential neighborhood. I'm all for somebody making a living. However, these are very unsightly. I believe they hurt our house value. If I had to put my house up for sale right now, I'm not sure that I could sell my house because that's how bad it looks. Your folks here at the city have done a nice job. They've come out and taken a look at the situation. They've been out a couple of different times to work with us. The problem is, the code, the individual is within code with multiple trailers in the front yard. I'm here tonight to ask you if we could take a look at that code, strengthen that code so my neighborhood looks nice. I think this would impact a lot of neighborhoods. I can't believe this is the only neighborhood where this is happening, but I would like to see this resolved. So I'm just bringing this before you tonight, and thank you. I also have pictures as well, and I've shared those with Mr. Hearst, my councilman from my neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Dolores Point Dexter.
My name is Dolores Point Dexter. I live at 7932 Gaelic Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28306. I'm here because there's a road on Century Street that comes out to Strickland Bridge Road, and it's very dangerous. People do not stop at the stop sign, and so many deaths had happened on that street, Strickland Bridge and Century on the other end. So it is something that need to be done. The stop sign is not working, you know? And my daughter was one that died on Strickland Bridge Road, too. So I would like for someone to address that. And then again, with public, PWC, they sent a letter over a year ago about the sewer system. Now, we filled the letter out and sent it back. We never heard anything from them, so I called, and they said that we are in the area that it would be 2022 before anything can happen. But in the meeting before, they said that was the first priority, your first priority. So I am wondering what is going on, or what is happening, because we still have to have our septic tank emptied. So no one is paying for that but us, you know? And we are paying city tax, wherein I thought that when I moved here, I would be in the country. I bought a house in the country, and now it's city, and they're not doing anything about the sewer system. So that's what I want you to address.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Point Dexter, we'll have a staff person contact you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Rodney Strickland. Mr. Rodney Strickland. Our next speaker is Mr. Richard Freidenbauer.
Welcome, sir.
My name is Richard Freidenberg, and I live at 7081 Kings Lynn Loop in Fayetteville. Live directly behind and next to the new ZACB's that was built on Rayford Road. Home was built in 1987. We never had a water problem. Since ZACB's and the GCF was put in, and the holding tank, the flood holding tank that was put in, last year, we've had three major floods where it's going through our backyards, tearing fences down, just destroying my yard, my two neighbors' yards. What I've done on this so far, thanks to Mr. Moan, I've sent pictures. I talked to Mr. Jeff Rayford, who is one of the inspectors that came out and inspected the land, and he said, "Meets all the code." And I said, "Could I possibly get a copy of the inspection and the plot from that?" He said, "No, that's all confidential. You can't, you're not allowed to see that." I talked to the city attorney, not the city attorney, excuse me, I talked to Mrs. Rodriguez, who is the city engineer. She said, "Well, that's not quite true. I will get you a copy through the attorney office in Fayetteville." I did get a copy of that. I did look at the plot. I did look at what it was done. We've got a 13 and 1/2-foot-deep holding pond behind the concession, behind the ZACB's. It's 27 yards long, 22 yards wide, 13 and 1/2 feet deep. Now, you'd think that's a 100-year flood plan, that that's going to hold water and not go out anywhere. The only problem with that is, the overflow is only 3 and 1/2 feet deep. Let's see, 13 feet deep, and then anything over 3 and 1/2 feet spills out. The end of that runs down out of the spillway, and if you look at the plot, it's just a dotted line. It doesn't go anywhere. It spills out about 41 yards past that, right at the corner of all our lots. I've talked to the city engineer. They've had people out there to look at it. It's been going on since the 11th of April. No joy. We're not getting, they don't even bother to call us anymore. They just, so something's got to be done. If I can fix it, believe me, but you don't want me to do that. So I don't know what's taken so long. They've got this hospital over here almost done, in 3, not done, but they've been working on that when they started my water problem, and they're almost done with the hospital. So I don't quite understand what's taken so long. Appreciate the time, and again, thank you, Mr. Moan, for your help.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. James Lacy.
Mayor Robertson and councilpeople, good evening. I've deleted two items from my three-item list in the interest of the three minutes. I think we used to have two years ago, but anyway, that was really pushing it. I'm sure you know more about it than I do, but to me, I've been following this for a long time, and I'm trying to figure out why they're putting the bus terminal over here. You know, well, I'm sure you know all the answers anyway, but you're going to have more traffic, more noise, and congestion. I also think the cost is maybe a little bit high. I would urge you to maybe back up, take another look at this, and I don't know how much money the city's spent so far, but I just think it's like putting it in the wrong place. And with that, I'll be the one for the, maybe hold the record for the shortest speech.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, by the way, I live at 2013 Blackfriars Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Marsha Jones.
I'm smiling. My name is Marsha Jones. I live at 3095 Enterprise Avenue, and I came to say thank you for putting the route back on Enterprise Avenue. Thank you. But I also have another problem. I know you're going to say what I'm advocating for now. Well, I'm going to tell you. I went to the library, and I'm visually impaired, and I wanted to use a computer, and they don't have a computer for me. They don't open up anything. I can't see anything. It's too small. Now, this isn't really a big issue because a public library should have accessibility to the handicapped since they got the parking space out front. But once you go inside, there's no place for it. I can't use the computers. Now, I'm working on this Class of 72 Turn 60 Birthday Bash, and I'm going to the library, and I'm getting ready to go in there, email and read my email, and I'm all excited, and the lady says, "I can't help you." I said, "Why?" She says that the computers are not accessible to people who are visually impaired and blind. They don't have Zoom text, they don't have JAWS. I'm just, okay, so I have to bring somebody with me to the library in order to get work on it. Now, they have all these computers sitting there in the library, and they got the earplugs, and I mean, everybody's, but not me. So I'm taking up another challenge, y'all. I'm going to find out why they don't have a computer for blind people and visually impaired people in the public library. I thank you for the last one. I really do. I really, really do, because it's nice to have a bus come down there, and I'm glad y'all took the time to do that for us. Thank you. But now I need to get the computer where I can go to the public library and use it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. The library's actually part of the county system, so we'll make sure that Commissioner Evans, right behind you, champions that.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jerry Reinal.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the Fayetteville City Council, good evening. My name is Jerry Reinal, 516 Deer Path Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28311. Tonight, I come before you to discuss two apparently unrelated items, the mail and chicken. In 2011, the United States Postal Service developed plans to consolidate hundreds of mail processing and distribution centers throughout the country. The Fayetteville plan on Green Street was one that was identified for closure. A December 2011 public hearing was conducted with many of us, including myself, voicing concerns with the proposed closure and the detrimental impact upon our quality of life. Closure will result in a loss of about 400 high-paying jobs in the city of Fayetteville. A January 2014 story by Catherine Pritchard in the Fayetteville Observer indicated the plans were on hold. Well, I'm here to report tonight that the plans are not on hold. The USPS has published a new consolidation plan, and the closures will resume next year. The Fayetteville P and D C is scheduled to be closed. On chicken, Sanderson Farms is exploring Cumberland County for a new plant to join their ten other plants that they already have operating safely throughout the nation. You've talked about the potential jobs from this venture. Most of what is published and presented locally appears to be negative distortions of the industry and Sanderson Farms. My limited research shows that this is a good and environmentally responsible company, and that has the same types of challenges that other companies with 11,000 employees have. I have no financial interest in Sanderson Farms, but I do have a financial stake in our city, and request that you base your decisions on the Sanderson Farms project based upon proven facts and not distortions and inaccurate claims by those with special interests wanting to kill the project. I've got one other item, too, with Representative Floyd and Senator Meredith here. I want to compliment them. Legislation was before the General Assembly to impose registration and insurance requirements on motor scooter operators. And through their leadership, they killed the insurance requirements. And so these guys that are driving around on motor scooters, selling newspapers and things like that, they're not going to have to buy the insurance. And I think that's, I think that'll work out better for a lot of those that need them for transportation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Raquel Johnson.
Welcome, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Robertson, the Fayetteville City Council Committee. My name is Raquel Russell Johnson, and I represent the Chestnut Hills community as well as District Seven, which is under the leadership of Councilman Wright. I'm speaking on behalf of my community. And my task tonight is to address several concerns that we are facing. Every other month, we have our community meeting, and we talk about things that will help us, better us, and move us forward. My neighborhood is all about growing. We are right off Sky Bowl Row, and as you all know, the construction has been tremendous. We have recently got the Buffalo Wild Wings. And at the interest of our community, we are now facing a pothole that has come from sewage that is coming from the establishment. So what we're here tonight, we're asking for some assistance. Ms. Mack stood up earlier and told you about the problems with the water in the back, but we have some other concerns as well. We have not had our subdivision paved in several years. We were told that there are a number of years that it takes for a community to have the community repaved. We're asking that you come out and address that. We have potholes that are tearing up our cars, and we would like to address that. We also, in the recent months, have had several homes that have either been foreclosed, or they have gotten old and the people moved on or died. And in the sake of time, I have addresses, but we have several homes that have abandoned cars, grass is grown, trees are humongous, and it's just an eyesore. And it's a rest haven for crime for our community. And our community is a lot of elderly people, and I would like to help them to make our community safe. I'll be willing to give these addresses to Councilman Wright, so he can address them. I made a call to our police department, which we would like to see more to come out to the neighborhood. They came out and put stickers saying that this stuff should be removed. There's abandoned cars in some of the backyards, and we haven't seen anything yet. So we're just asking someone to please come out and check these homes, and they really need to be addressed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. James Kegley.
Good evening. Mayor Robertson, distinguished councilmen, my name is James Kegley. I also live in Chestnut Hill subdivision, 7528 Hill Road. Most of the concerns have already been addressed. However, you know, one of the other issue that is of concern, like you said, along with the growth, right there in the beginning of Richwood Court, we're starting to get a lot of traffic over in that area. So we was wanting to know if it was possible that they could do some type of analysis to see if they could do something to maybe to better that situation. And pretty much, Ms. Mack and my sister already have addressed all of the things that need to be addressed. But for the sake of time, everybody that's from Chestnut Hill, could y'all please stand up? So I think that's it. By the way, I invited Chestnut Hill to come tonight to express themselves for the community. I met with them about a month ago, so I invited them all to come speak tonight.
Welcome. Please, anytime things aren't going right, call Councilmember Wright. Mr. Manager, perhaps the Chestnut Hills area would be a good one for the code enforcement teams to do a walk. What do you call it, a walk down? Walk through? Tighten up? What do you call it?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm typing up some messages right now for staff.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
We'll close the public forum. Council, we'll go to the consent agenda, item 7.0.
Mr. Mayor moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's Councilmember Hurst and Councilmember Moan, the first and the second. Council discussion. Councilmember Jensen. Okay.
Yes, Ted.
Have you got discussion, Councilmember Arp?
You're voting yes?
Yes.
He's voting yes.
Okay, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk with Councilmember Arp on the telephone, that is unanimous vote. At this time, we'll move into the public hearings. Individuals wishing to speak at the public hearing should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue being discussed. Each speaker will be limited to only three minutes unless your group wishes to appoint just one speaker. Time used in response to a question from a council member will not be counted against that speaker. Discussion following the public hearing will be limited to this body only unless someone from this chair is recognized to respond to a question. So again, when you hear your name called by the city clerk, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then you will see the lights on the podium. When the yellow light turns on, you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the red light turn on, your time has expired. And again, due to council policy, we may not extend those times. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, do we have a speaker for 8.01?
Yes, sir, we do. Is there a staff presentation first?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is your public hearing on the U-Haul property at 2346 Gillespie Street. It's a contiguous area, about 9.91 acres. It's currently used by the U-Haul Company as a rental and storage facility. We received a petition on May the 5th. It's already been to your zoning commission on June the 10th, and you just took action on your consent agenda for the initial zoning. This map shows the area inside the current city and shaded in yellow. The subject property is shaded in blue. There's a label pointing toward it. It's right across the street from the auditorium arena. The shot shows you the arena across the street from the U-Haul property. Looking down up Gillespie Street with the property on the left side, another shot of the site. This is one of the new buildings that they're now putting up on the site, the southern edge of the property and the northern edge. This has been reviewed by our city departments through a normal process. You have your lots of information in your packet. The staff does recommend that you adopt option one for this area, annexing the area tonight, and that your motion should affirm the initial zoning action just taken. The reason we're recommending annexation is that the petition is sufficient. Our departments can handle this area, and the budgetary impact should be positive. In your packet, some of the numbers appear to be a little scrambled up. I apologize for that. I didn't realize there was a problem in formatting of the numbers. This just shows the site. And I would add that there have been some issues about compliance with our city standards. We've been talking to the U-Haul folks. I think a lot of that's been worked out. If you choose to annex the area, we recommend that you acknowledge that they, whatever they're going to say during their part of the hearing regarding helping the fire flow, making that more up to standard. That concludes my presentation. Take any questions?
Any preliminary questions for Mr. Nash? All right, thank you. Stand by. We'll start the public hearing.
Mayor, we have two speakers in favor. The first speaker is Mr. Jason Greider.
I'm Jason Greider. I'm the marketing company president for U-Haul. I actually just signed up, just in case anyone had questions for me. We actually have another representative here, Mr. Chris Forrest, from our construction department with Amerco. So I'll let him speak at this time.
Good evening, council. On August 8th, we had a email sent from city planner Craig Harmon. And basically, it was just a list of items that he needed from us to go along with this annexation, one of them being the fire flow and how we were going to deal with it. In our response, I just wanted to put down for the record for the council, if this email was not received to anybody here, that we'd like to request further documentation for, or like to give further documentation for the city, showing what we're going to do with this fire hydrant issue. Also, we'd like to request this included as a stipulation for the approval of the And I guess one of the questions I do have that, or U-Haul and Amerco Real Estate have, is if the annexation does go through, are we required to do or have to put this fire hydrant in? And if we do, is there an exemption for us that if the annexation does go through, do we have the choice of putting in or not putting in and not doing anything with it? Because basically, right now, what we have is a bathroom that we put in in our storage facility that you saw earlier. And it's, we initially were just going to tie in with the city, or excuse me, the county. And we were told that we needed to go through the annexation process, which we agree on, which was fine. However, I guess what we don't really agree on is putting a 200-foot line for a new fire hydrant that wasn't required by the county and what we really don't need. We like to comply with everything on this annexation. However, we're not quite sure if we would like to, as in putting that hydrant in. And if we do, then we'd like to have some kind of agreement with the city on that, just for considering that's going to be very costly for us.
Stand by just a minute and let staff.
Mr. Mayor, in light of these issues, I'd recommend the item be referred back to staff for further negotiation. This is kind of last minute, when I don't think we can answer or expect the council to answer those questions. So it sounds like the applicant needs to have this item deferred back to staff, and we'll bring something back to you at a later time.
Do you have a problem doing that, postponing it for two weeks?
No, not at all.
All right. If you're done, let me close the public hearing, and then council can discuss it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion if we want to postpone.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we refer the annexation of the U-Haul property at 2346 Gillespie Street back to staff for further clarification.
Second, about council, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Davy. Council, further discussion. Mr. Moan, everything good? Okay, I'll ask for your vote. Mr. Arp?
Yes.
Do you vote in affirmative, sir? Okay, that's unanimous. 8.02, welcome, Mr. Shuford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Let me bring this item up. This is kind of an unusual item in that we're creating a new overlay district, the Crown Tourism Overlay District. And it's especially gratifying, I think, for staff, as this is an opportunity for the city and county to work closely together for a variety of purposes. First of all, we'll be strengthening the Crown Coliseum as an economic driver for our community. It will enhance the appearance and the function of this important gateway to our city. And it also demonstrates city and county unity of support and purpose for our entertainment and tourism industry. So with this, let me give you a little background. And this project was proposed and started with the county. We let them take the lead. The Board of County Commissioners earlier this year adopted their version of this ordinance. And where our regulations are actually more strict, we have left those in place. We have since, we started the process, heard from some folks who were concerned about the more stringent nonconformity requirements for single-family dwellings. And in your packet on your dius, you have some suggested language that exempts those so that they would only be subject to the standard nonconformity requirements of the city in general. Let me go through the location. It's over 200-acre parcel. You see the Crown Coliseum centered there in that green-hatched area. That is area that is in the city. But it's much larger than just the area covered by the city. It includes a great deal of property that's in Cumberland. It includes a great deal of property that's in Cumberland County's jurisdiction. This perhaps shows land uses that illustrate the varied land uses you have in the area. And again, this map is showing a similar type of approach. If you see the blue line, that represents the extent of the overlay district. And you will see, if you look to the, this is especially easy to see on this one, if you look to the right side of the property, let's find and get the cursor to come up and not change the slide, but you can see that this neighborhood is exempted from the area because it contains largely single-family homes. So again, this is a cooperative effort. We have some mutual interest here, and we want the Coliseum to be very successful. We're, some of the things that we are addressing include billboard regulations. And finally, I just want to reiterate that any new development that would seek PWC utilities would undergo the normal petition for annexation into the city. So the issues here are that there's some new definition for hotel motel and a fairly significant limitation on the types of land uses allowed in this overlay district. A billboard restriction, they must be at least 1,000 feet from the Gillespie Street right-of-way, and limited only to rights-of-way with full control or limited access control. Legal non-conformities, this is the area that we thought we have, some of the people that have contacted us have been concerned about. If they're damaged or more than 40%, they have to be brought into compliance, or if they're discontinued for more than 180 days. And so we have that new language in your packet that would protect existing single-family homes. This is a map showing the billboards located near 301 and the ones that are existing. And I'll have a couple of pictures here that sort of illustrate the prime drivers for this particular overlay district, just the quality of the land uses in the area and some of the older billboards. So the zoning commission and staff do recommend that you approve the overlay district, the language and the zoning designation. And these are the reasons why we believe this particular area needs to be preserved for commercial, industrial, and government uses. The airport and the Crown both are part of our tourism industry, and that will be strengthened. The residential zoning and uses to the east side of the property will be even more protected than they are currently. And we have growth management plan that calls for urban development in this area, which would again be strengthened by this particular overlay. Be glad to answer any questions council has.
Thank you. Mr. Voorhees, why are we getting this tonight? The changes on the dais?
Mayor, I'll be glad to answer that. The reason we have those changes in there is that when I was reviewing the ordinance this afternoon, I noted that we had a couple of typos in there dealing with county boards as opposed to city boards. So we're asking that you make those minor technical corrections. So it is only the area that you see highlighted in there that is changing from what you had in the packet.
Were you before the packets rolled out? I mean, you didn't see it at that point?
No, sir. I was actually out of town when this one came to the Granica system.
Mr. Moan?
Thank you, sir. Could you hit the back arrow a couple of times to go to the last two maps you had shown? Not that one, the before this.
This one?
Yes, on the left side of the screen, where the light blue line is, it looks like that includes the U-Haul property that just came before us.
Yes, sir.
And then the previous map before this one, I can't tell if it's in there. It's like a blue line, not a green line.
It is a little bit darker line, and that one's more difficult to read.
Oh, but.
But it does include the U-Haul property. The U-Haul property will actually, since it has started construction in the county, would be regarded as one of those non-conforming uses. It would not, after this gets put in place, similar uses to that would not be able to go in.
So then the green line with the hash is city property, the parts with the blue outline the county properties?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I think this probably shows a little bit easier.
Mr. Colvin?
Mr. Shuford, thank you for that. Can you go back to the, there was a couple of slides where you had the descriptions where you were saying the purposes of this request?
Let's see, that's not it.
Okay.
These are our standards that outline the major features of the overlay district.
Right. So one of the questions that I have, so if you have some single-family residential areas in this area that say are damaged past your 40%, do they have to rebuild to new city standards, or what is the?
They would be subject to our normal non-conformity requirements, which are much less stringent than the 40%.
Okay. I'm just trying to get you to elaborate that a little bit, because there was some concerns about that and how that would work. You've got some residents that's been there for quite some time that weren't.
Exactly. Well, what we did with this in working with the county, we tried to avoid, and as I noted over here on this slide, single-family areas that we, where we could avoid them. And then obviously, this neighborhood is not in. I think it was originally proposed to be in and was taken out by the county as they reviewed it. So there are a scattering of single-family homes that would be within this area. And we did hear from them, the 40% damage standard is very stringent, and it was intended to move out non-conforming commercial and other uses that weren't necessarily residential in this area as quickly as they could. So they would be basically covered by the same standards that the city would apply to its own single-family homes, as opposed to this more stringent 40%.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Jensen?
Welcome back, first of all. I wanted to tell you that. Will you go back, and I think my question has been answered, back to the commercial right, yeah?
Yep.
Stop. No. At the commercial, the billboard?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I understand what councilmember Colvin is saying about the residential, but I just wanted to ask the question. So if we do this, that these businesses will have to adhere to our city ordinances of the billboards and things like that?
Well, they'll actually have to comply with the ordinance that is in the overlay district.
Okay.
And that would limit the number of billboards that could be placed anywhere that can be seen from 301. And if this structure was damaged, 40% or more of its value, then it could not be put back.
Okay, my question was answered. Thank you.
Council, any further questions on the agenda item or the supplement that was left on the dais? Okay, Madam Clerk?
So we have two speakers speaking in opposition. The first speaker is Mr. Richard Breeden.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Richard Breeden. I live at 2608 Cheney Street in Dogwood Acres. And that's on the other map, that's the actual area, the neighborhood that has been exempted. Initially, I was pretty happy with the proposal for tonight. We had been working with Ms. Karen Hilton and her staff, and they were really good folks. They worked extremely hard to put together a good package that was agreeable to everyone. So for that, I'd like to thank Ms. Hilton and her staff. First, and most importantly, the residents in the CTOD do not want to be annexed. Those that are already a part of the City of Fayetteville, fine. The ones that are in the county, we do not want to be annexed into the City of Fayetteville. The most important thing I've got to discuss tonight is Section 3 in this ordinance. Now, there was mention made to some changes on a packet that you have, apparently we weren't privy to, because I printed these that had the highlighted changes. I printed it off of the web several days ago. Now, if there's changes that's been done last minute, I'm sorry, ma'am?
There's no changes to Section 3.
Okay. Well, not just Section 3, I'm referring to the 40% destruction. If a natural disaster to your home or anything of that nature, whether it be flood, tornado, whatever, if it exceeds 40%, which is determined by the city inspectors, then the residences wouldn't be able to rebuild their home. Now, the part that we have says that Dogwood Acres is excluded, as well as all the residences in the CTOD, whether it be county or city, are excluded from that. The present city-county ordinance is 50% destruction. Now, if we are excluded, everybody's happy with it, and we'll live with that. But that includes all the residences, not just Dogwood Acres. Lastly, Section 3 says if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held to be invalid, that we can just wipe it away. So the terminology where Dogwood Acres is identified and the other residences in that area that have been grandfathered clause, by using Section 3, we can throw that out and all in void. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Bernard Van. Mr. Bernard Van?
Mr. Council, Mr. Mayor, where'd the mayor go? Is he gone? Oh, okay. Anyhow, Mr. Mayor, I don't have much to say. What I got to say is real easy, gentlemen. Y'all caught me surprised on this stuff, and I made a few notes, and I want to bring these things up. And then after that, if any of you can answer them, that's fine. Can't well-learn together. First off, I'm not, I'm in the county. I didn't vote for none of you. How did I end up here in front of you? Somebody explain it to me. I'm in the county, Mr. Mayor. How'd I end up here begging the city council not to do all this?
Go ahead and finish, and we'll address the agenda.
Okay.
I don't want to waste your time while the clock stands.
Okay. Another thing, what would our zoning in the county area, what's it going to be? I mean, you could put anything on, say, you do this midnight deal. What will it be, our zoning? We need to know this. Will our taxes increase? Most of us out there living in these areas are over 65 to 68. I'm 68 years old. I want to know. I'm on a budget. I'm trying to live like, I've lived there 45 years, Mr. Hurst. I've been there 45 years. But they come up here, and they're going to do all this stuff, and it don't mean nothing to them, because they're just doing numbers. We need to know more about this than what we know. And let's be front with each other, bring it all out, lay it on the line. I know it's going to happen. This thing's going to go through. Somebody's going, the gallows going to fall. But I feel like we're owed more than what we're receiving. We need to know exactly what is going on. I will say this, I didn't get the first letter to come out for these meetings. Why y'all do not send out certified mail? I talked to people in my area today that have not got a letter on this. Next door to me, the street next to me, nobody's got a letter. Why not send it out certified where everybody can get their letters? And what kind of codes have we got to go by? Building codes, what we can and can't fix, what we can fix. I read in there where we can't do so much, we can't do no maintenance and, in other words, are we supposed to let our mess rot down, or can we keep it up? What can we do? Y'all need to let us know what can we do? And if any water or sewer's running down there, runs by my place, does that mean I got to pay? Am I out?
Yeah, 26.
Does that mean I got to pay extra for that, for water and sewer? I begged 20 years ago. I run the water to the warehouse, the tart warehouse, stopped at a fire hydrant. I offered my labor free if they purchased materials to go past my property line. That would have been 20 years ago. I offered that. I run that water line. You tell the contractor. And you had something in there, Mr. Shuford's had in there, what kind of new language is supposed to help us out? I'm out of here. Thank you. I just want to hear that.
Hang on just a minute. Let's answer your questions now. It was, I believe, the gentleman just before you was talking about annexation. Let me close the public hearing. Now we can do this. The city's not trying to annex anybody out there. We're not trying to create rules or laws or ordinances for anybody that's not within the city limits. So what we're talking about up here is a similar ordinance to what the county has done. Now, that's really, if you want to discuss the details of that, it needs to go to the county, not the city. But what the intent of the ordinance is, is try to bring a better quality of business into the commercial areas surrounding the Crown Coliseum. Entertainment-centered businesses. So you'll have restaurants and that type of thing, rather than a more common type of use for that district.
You understand where I'm coming from? We're not getting a lot of answers on a lot of things, though. I think all of you, you know, you live somewhere, all of you would agree with that.
Right.
You want to know exactly what's going on.
Absolutely. And if you lived, I believe, Madam Clerk, you can kind of help me with this. Do we send out notices to those within the city limits?
I'm not aware.
I got a next-door neighbor that didn't get no letter or nothing.
Mr. Shuford, I think, has some answers for you.
First of all, sir, let me give you my business card, so we can get in touch. Let me get to the microphone here, if you don't mind.
Are you through with me?
Yes, sir, you through with us. Thank you.
Mayor, you're exactly right. There will be no annexation as part of this. The only time folks would be required to annex would be under your policy, if they were getting new or enhanced water and sewer services. We are certainly, Mr. Breeden was concerned about the single-family exemption language. It's the same language that he discussed with Ms. Hilton, and it does exempt all single-family structures that would be covered in this overlay district. As far as the county issues, the other gentleman raised, there are no zoning changes associated with this. Any tax increases he would face as a county resident would be up to the county commissioners to set each year. He'd still be subject to the same building codes that he's subject to now. The ordinance specifically provides for regular and routine maintenance of property. And in terms of water and sewer, again, if he's interested in getting that, he probably will have to become a city resident.
Thank you, Mr. Shuford. Did that answer your questions? Thank you. Councilmember McDougal?
Just wanted to comment, Mr. Mayor, and to the gentleman. In order to be annexed, they would have to approve that, the property owners will. And secondly, if a person is a renter, the property owner actually would get that notice and not the person that would be renting property, and that may be what's happening with his neighbor. I'm not sure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Council, any further questions? Okay. Public hearing is closed. I'll entertain a vote. Mayor Protim Davy?
I move to provide the recommendation of staff. I move to provide the recommendation of staff to approve the overlay zoning as presented with the...
I have a first by Mayor Protim Davy, a second by Councilmember Arp via phone.
And this is to include the highlights and the final changes.
Counsel, any questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, including Mr. Arp on the telephone, that is unanimous. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Schofer. Are you back again, Mr. Schofer?
I'm afraid you're stuck with me for the next four items.
It's our privilege, sir. Item 8.0, 8.3.
Counsel's quite familiar with the next three items because they're part of our redevelopment toolbox. And you've had to suffer through at least a couple of presentations from you on these. But we're bringing them forward and we're pleased to get these into our regulatory toolbox. This first one deals with the cottage developments. And they would be required to go through the neighborhood compatibility permit process. So there will be neighborhood oversight on any of these. But a cottage development is really a cluster of detached, single-family homes that are subject to some design standards. And they're generally at a higher density than the underlying zoning would provide. But they are associated with a great deal of common open space. So it's a small-scale infill development tool. We think it'd be, through our processes, they would all be compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. And they fit our demographics quite well. An example of this, here's a site plan that we've included for your benefit that would show the fairly large amount of common area that would be associated with it. And then an actual photograph of a cottage development in another state that mimics the design shown here. So both the planning commission and staff recommend that you approve the ordinance to set up the cottage development provision.
Thank you, Mr. Schofer. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have no speakers for this item.
We will open and close the public hearing. Mr. Colvin?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this amendment to City Code, Chapter 30, to define and classify cottage development, special standards and approval process as presented by Mr. Schofer.
And seconded by Mr. Wright. Mr. Hurst?
Question. Mr. Schofer, would this, is this cottage development similar to what may be going in an Oak Ridge Avenue?
It is not dissimilar from it, but that one was approved under the neighborhood compatibility permit process using the changes to the zero lot line ordinance that you had looked at previously. And in fact, those homes are much larger than what would be developed under the cottage development ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, including Mr. Arp on the telephone and the affirmative vote for Ms. Davy, who is away from her chair. Item 8.4, Mr. Schofer.
Okay, again, part of the redevelopment toolbox, we're proposing three new or modified uses. They would be live-work dwellings or units, the research and technology production use, and urban agriculture. I do want to say from the outset that the urban agriculture has nothing to do with the proposed chicken plant. In fact, the urban agriculture ordinance specifically excludes any poultry or livestock uses. But the live-work broadens our current definition and allows us to be a development option in more commercial areas. And it establishes a parking and density regulations for live-work units. The research and technology production uses recognizes that there are a lot of low-impact production uses, such as medical optical software and assembly of electronic components that would be acceptable in our commercial zoning districts. And so we have it set up so that it would be a special use permit in the neighborhood commercial zoning district and permitted in limited commercial, community commercial, and our two industrial districts.
Thank you, Mr. Schofer.
And then last but not least, we have the urban agriculture, and this specifically prohibits livestock, but it's intended to promote aquaculture, hydroponic, and craft gardens that could be placed in some of our commercial property. And it does have some standards to protect surrounding residential uses. And the planning commission and staff recommend approval of this. Be glad to answer any questions.
Madam Clerk?
So we have no speakers for this item.
I'll open and close the public hearing. Councilmember McDougal.
Does this include item number 8.4 and 8.5?
No, sir, I think I've gotten out of order of your agenda. My presentation apparently is not in order with your...
I didn't know if I took a nap, man.
No, no, you, I think you were painfully alert during my presentation.
And just to clarify, Madam Speaker, I mean, Madam Clerk, we don't have anybody for 8.5, is that correct?
No, sir, we have no speakers for 8.4 or for 8.5.
Well, let me briefly go through the alternative access one, and if you'd like, Mayor, and then...
Well, let's take these votes individually. I'll entertain a motion at this time. Mr. Crisp?
Motion to approve Second. the amendment to City Code, Chapter 30, to create an alternative access allowance for small subdivisions.
Councilmember Crisp with the motion, second, Mr. McDougal. Counsel, is there a discussion? Mr. Mountain?
Since we're out of order, I believe that's our next agenda item is the...
That was 8.5, we just did.
Right, the livestock work. So that's the one we want to approve right now.
That's correct.
Okay.
That was it?
Well, I thought the motion was about the neighborhood entrance when it was just spoken.
Yeah, you, my question is, did you present, you presented 8.5 and you haven't presented 8.4, right?
That's correct, I've gotten you...
Then may I amend my motion, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
If I may amend that to approve City Code, Chapter 30, to modify or create definitions, classifications, and standards for three uses, live slash work, research and technology production, and urban agriculture.
Our number 8.5.
Second.
Mr. McDougal again. Counsel, discussion? Okay. Thank you, seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please.
Yes.
That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right, Mr. Schofer, let's back up to 8.4, please.
We are indeed doing that, Mayor, and...
I must have been taking a nap, okay?
We owe men, Bill.
Well, the, this is an effort on our part to generate what we think is going to be an opportunity for greater flexibility in accessing small subdivisions. And also a chance to have an environmentally friendly wind for these sorts of small, short streets. Our goal here is to recognize that our city standards typically require a 45-foot right-of-way, at least a 22-to-24-foot paved roadway. And for subdivisions of five or fewer lots, that may be excessive. So what we're proposing here is that we have the ability on a case-by-case basis to let our engineering and infrastructure department and fire departments review the, any proposed access for these smaller subdivisions, determine that there is adequate emergency access and safe and effective garbage and trash pickup provided, and certainly it be in compliance with the state fire code. So this would provide that level of staff flexibility. Again, it's limited to five or fewer lots. Both the width and construction materials must be approved by both the fire department and the engineering and infrastructure department. And we do have, for the structures that fall into this, some heightened design standards, and some may actually trigger that neighborhood compatibility permit. But we think that the development community will appreciate this option. And it may cut down on the extent to which we have to deal with stormwater. Gives us a chance to implement some low-impact development design standards, which we think would be great. So both the planning commission and staff recommend approval for this. And when we have a project that goes through this process, we will alert you to it so that you can be aware of it and take an opportunity to go out and visit it yourself to see how it works.
Thank you, Mr. Schofer.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we amend to the City Code, Chapter 30, to create an alternative access allowance to small subdivisions.
Second.
Okay, I'll tell you that first and second, right after I open and close the public hearing. That motion was made by Mr. Wright, seconded by Mr. Colvin. Counsel, is there a discussion? Mr. McDougal.
You just did what I was gonna suggest that we do to the public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Crisp?
Yes, let me just put this in a even tone, Mr. Schofer. What I'm understanding here is that we have a small subdivision of five lots of this. And there may be the opportunity here according to this amendment that the developer may not have to have the right-of-way 22 to 24 feet wide.
That's correct, sir.
So we're trying to work with them, but whatever right-of-way has to be approved by the fire department.
That's correct. And their standard is a 20-foot wide surface to access. And typically, these will not be any longer than 150 feet because that's a state fire code issue as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Crisp, any further questions? Seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please.
Yes.
With Mr. Arp on the phone, that's unanimous, Madam Clerk, thank you. Mr. Schofer, 8.6.
Okay, this last one, and Ms. McGill will correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe we have anyone signed up for this one either. But this is sort of a housekeeping set of amendments that we bring to you periodically. We're finally ensuring that we have exactly the right language for those setback standards for swimming pools. And then we, probably the other most significant item in here is drive-through facilities for convenience stores and restaurants in the Business Park District. They would be limited, in fact, let me go through these. You've got the swimming pool issue, and we're basically using the swimming pool industry terminology to measure setbacks. Convenience stores and deals with fast-food restaurants and convenience stores in the Business Park District, provided they're very close to an interstate interchange. So if we have other business parks besides the military business park, these sorts of uses might not be allowed to locate in those business parks because they would not be close to an interchange. We've got some technical corrections for measurements, footnotes. And we also delete a reference to a table that doesn't exist. Also, in the dives, there is a small clarification about the restaurant issue for that convenience store component. Because what we're seeing is convenience stores like the Sheetz chain are starting to get into food as well. And we want to make it clear that they have the same ability as a fast-food restaurant to have a drive-through facility. So the planning commission and staff would ask you to approve this. And these are all minor amendments, housekeeping type of things.
Thank you, Mr. Schofer. I'll open and close the public hearing. Counsel, go to you for action.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. McDougal?
I recommend approval of the proposed miscellaneous changes and corrections to the development code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go to Mr. Hurst for your first for the evening. Counsel, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Wright?
I have a question. Is this pertaining to the, or can you add into the smoke shops, you know, the little, the stores that is popping up all around? How would that affect this?
That has no effect on this particular amendment. What we do have coming for you in the very near future would be a comprehensive set of regulations for tobacco shops. And we've been working on that for a while. It's, we're not quite on the cutting edge because we won't be the first community in the state to adopt regulations dealing with those types of shops. But I think we'll end up being the second. So we're using the information we've gleaned from, I believe it's Greenville, North Carolina, where they have regulated them. And we've been taking a great deal of public input on the matter. And I believe that'll be coming to you next month, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, with Mr. Arp on the telephone, that is unanimous. Mr. Hume, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. What I have for you tonight are some route changes that we've proposed that would go into effect in October. And these are all included in your, in the current year's budget. The purpose is that these are considered major, major changes. And that, my policy requires us to provide a 10-day notice, and we advertise those both in the Fayetteville Observer and the Essentia Latino. Again, these all are included in the fiscal year '15 budget. And we would, again, implement those if approved in October. Just to let you know of our outreach efforts, we had two open houses in the areas that we're making, making changes. One was on August 1st at Christ United Methodist Church on Rayford Road. That is on our Route 7, which is one of the routes that we would change right in that area. And then on August 5th, at Fire Station Number 4 on Boone Trail. And again, that is close to the Owen Drive area, which is, again, close to the Enterprise Avenue. We also had, of course, flyers at our transfer center and buses. We took written and call-in comments. We also, this time, we went out and set up tables at our transfer center, at one day at Cross Creek Mall, another day at Walter Reed, to actually, to try to engage our riders right at the, right at where we are. And so we did that, we had 120, we actually had 120 surveys. And all of those were very positive about the changes. We only had, I think it was nine people besides staff that attended the public open houses. The new route, one is what we've called our Route 31. And it is, one end would be at Crown Center. It would go through the Enterprise Avenue and have a map that shows how it would go through the Medical Center and on to Rayford Road and Owen Drive, which it would connect with two other routes. Then we are modifying some routes. Number 7, again, that's the one that now goes out, comes out Robinson, goes out to Rayford Road, or goes out Rayford Road to Ireland. And then it has a big loop at the end that goes down Ireland Drive to the hospital and then comes back Owen Extended or south part of McPherson Church Road up to Rayford and comes back in. The reason that we're making this change, and I'll show you on the map later, is trying to provide two-way service on the streets that we do, so we're eliminating those routes. So it makes it much more convenient for our riders. The other one, 1950, those are, not necessarily would we have needed to bring these to you for the changes, but I want to make sure you're aware, and since we're going out to the public, we want to do that too. And that is because of the construction around Fort Bragg related to I-295, our plans for going in Yadkin Gate, as well as our plans for what's happening at Butner Gate. We've had to change those. And so we will be on Yadkin Road. Instead of going in Yadkin Road, until that 295 is completed and Yadkin Gate is reopened, we would be using the Riley Road Gate and going to the South PX as opposed to the Mini Mall. And on Route 50, which is the express, instead of going up Butner, because we're not able to really... to really construct a stop there with the... Where the construction's going to be, we've worked it out with the post, where we will actually go in Randolph Gate, use... Really use the old area where you used to get your car inspected before you entered the post. We would let somebody off there, go over to the commissary, and then come back. If anybody's waiting there, the guards are gonna help us get it in and out of there. This is the... Again, this is the route from Crown Center over to Rayford and Ireland. It does go through the Enterprise Avenue area, and as well as it goes through the hospital. We have met with Crown Center, and they're pleased with us coming there. Again, this route would run till about 6:30 on most nights, Monday through Saturday. We have enough in the budget that would allow us, on about 25 nights, to extend that service to serve events at the Crown Center, and so that is something that we would work with them, which events those would be. Again, this is the end of Route 7, and again, what this does is it provides... Now, we have, with this change, we have two-way service on Rayford Road, all the way out to Ireland Drive and Rayford Road. And then we have two-way service on David and Roxy, which, again, is now we just have one way, and so that is the reason for this change. Again, this just shows the way they work together.
At the end of Ireland, we circle around... Is that a commercial parking lot?
That is. That is the... Food line sits in the back. It's actually circling around what everyone, I think, refers to as the old Blockbuster. It's a rental place there. And we already have a shelter there. We have two routes that connect there now, so this will be a third one.
Mr. Colvin, do you have a question?
Mr. Hume, the route you were describing on Fort Bragg, where you would drop them off and let them... Allow them to go to the commissary, is that a covered waiting area?
We will have a covered waiting area. Actually, at... Until we get that shelter built on Randolph, they have agreed to allow their guards or sentries to actually board the bus, ride, and only let people off that have the proper ID to get off. So nobody would have to get off until we actually build that shelter. But we would have a covered area for people to wait for the bus.
How about these other expanses? They have covered areas as well?
They... The... I'm sorry?
These other areas that we're just describing that you're expanding services to, how many of those are covered?
At this time, we would not be in covered... We would not be installing covered stops other than those that are already have coverage. We would not install those until we see that we have the right level of activity to warrant those. Again, we do have... Key spots, we already have shelters, because other routes are there.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. McDougal.
Randy, on Route 31, the Enterprise Avenue, I noticed the lines were broken. Are we using a feeder there, or are the buses actually going down Enterprise and coming back up?
The buses would go... We would turn in Ponte Sia. We would turn off Owen Drive, and we'd go in Enterprise Avenue. Every time, we would come out on Eldorado to Coronada, and Coronada bring it out back to Owen. So... And Route 8 would stay there as it is right now.
Mr. Crisp?
Mr. Schuford, I got a question. I don't need an answer tonight, but I'd like an email on it. Because I'm looking at bus route as a route, or street as a route. But somebody asked me, how many bus routes do you have?
We have 13 routes right now.
Here's a question, and I need you to send me an email down, so I can get back to you. Why do we have Route 50, Route 19, Route 31? Answer that in the email sometime.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions before we go to the public hearing? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
So we have one speaker for this item, Mr. Melvin Kravitz.
Mr. Kravitz, good evening.
Melvin Kravitz, Massey Hill, Fayetteville, resident manager of Homeless Rescue. I've only spoken one time before in my three years since I've returned, and I am honored to say, a stroke of genius, the two new routes. The modification of seven, brilliant. Who's speaking? A gentleman who just returned from Fayetteville to have four hours of conference with the experts of their transportation system. Why? Because I happen to be a member of the Advisory Council, interested in seniors, and transportation is very important to seniors, and the number one priority of my now-completed, but two-week-late... If only I would have had it done two weeks ago, I would have been able to report my survey. Their system of survey is excellent. There's nothing I could say except praise this body for their choice of having those under make good recommendations for you to approve. And I choose the rest of my time to just give you a very sincere apology that, two weeks ago, the council that was one of two that gave report to you of their doings, I am the only member of that council that adamantly opposes the stupidity of using thousands to take a survey as to what seniors need. Please look into it.
Thank you, Mr. Kravitz. Mr. Hirsch?
If a motion is in order?
We'll be in just a minute. Thank you for joining us, sir. We'll close the public hearing. Mr. Hirsch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the public's input and to the leadership by Mr. Hume, and also the hard work of the fact committee, I would like to move that we adopt the route changes that are proposed for a better fiddle and area system of transit. Thank you so much.
Second.
Who's second in that? Oh, Mr. McDougal. Thank you. Counsel, discussion on the... Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please.
Yes.
Including Mr. Arp on the telephone, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Was that Green? Thank you. Mr. Hume, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor's Council. Again, we spent a lot of time... This is... On this item... I'm sorry, are you ready for me to move on?
Yes, sir.
We spent a lot of time on this item at our work session last week, and I have a brief presentation. If you'd like me to present it, if not, I'm here to answer questions.
Counsel, wish to hear it?
Yes, I think I do the public good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Hume. Thank you.
Again, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about the multimodal transit center. Again, this is a project that started back in 2002, when we went to our current location on Old Wilmington Road. As you know, our current location, we have portable buildings. We have some bus shelters. We have porta-potties. We do have some inside restrooms. But it is not a very attractive place. It doesn't really invite people to come there. There's been a lot of work that has been done on this facility since 2002. The planning and design work, a lot of that planning work started in 2004. It was actually added to the State Transportation Improvement Program in 2006. As you know, the previous councils selected this site, and we started with the property acquisition. Selected the site over a period with environmental and everything else from 2009 to 2010. The property acquisition started once that environmental document was approved, and that proceeded until last year, when we got our final piece of property. The design for this facility, the actual engineering work on it started in 2011, and we did receive a construction grant. Our first construction grant was through a competitive process through the Bus Livability Program, and that was in July of 2012. This is our current facility. You all have seen it, and if you're a passenger, you've been there. Just gives you a couple of views of what we currently have. It is surrounded, again, by chain link. There are things that we cannot do with our current facility, but we're really looking forward for the new one. These were the project objectives that were set, really, back when the study work started, and this was really to encourage transit use, to really provide customer convenience and comforts that those customers deserve. It was also designed to increase our capacity and to maximize our transit efficiency through circulation and other things. It does link with other transit modes. We have taxi stands. We currently do have Megabus that comes on, and they will be moving over there, and as well as we're about a block from our Amtrak station. In terms of design standards, again, they looked at both the accessibility, both by pedestrians and vehicle, our bus accessibility, as well as circulation, and then the waiting areas, again, that people feel comfortable both waiting inside and outside. And then part of this whole project has been a joint development or transit-oriented, transit-supportive development, which would both improve the transit system and provide resources for the transit system in the future. What's included in Phase 1? Again, the Phase 1 is really our direct transit portion. It accommodates the bus-based 16 buses. Only 13 of those initially will have canopies because of not building one of the originally planned buildings that would just be... That would have been privately constructed. Would provide covered walkways and waiting areas. Again, lighting and security are important. We would have a customer service center, which we would do many of the things we do now, but again, be able to do some things better. Megabus and taxis, as I mentioned, would be there. There is a bus operator area, break area. We would have some transit offices upstairs, and then a community room, which we would be able to hold our meetings, and would be available not just for transit, but for other community organizations and other city departments. But it's also a place that we can have some of these public hearings like we have now. We'd actually be able to hold those right on-site, or these public open houses. It is designed to be a lead silver facility, which, from an environmental point of view, is a city priority, and we feel we have met that. These are just some renderings. Again, this is what would initially... Just a rendering of what would be built. This is, again, probably the rendering that you've seen most before, because it does include the additional buildings that were designed, but at this point in time, we're not recommending. Again, just to go back to, this is what we're looking to build. This is another view, an aerial view, coming from Robinson Street, looking over toward downtown, and you see the... The top picture is what we are recommending. The bottom picture would be if all the alternates had been... We're being constructed, but we're not recommending that because of funding and other issues. The first floor, we'd have customer service in the passenger waiting rooms and restrooms. That's where our driver's lounge and their restrooms would be. We have an entry lobby. We'd have a small retail area in that entryway, as well as then we have just building shell-only, but some space for some retail and food service, and then, of course, there's other common areas. And again, I want to point out that the square footage of this building, of course, is 34,000 square feet, not 22, as I had reported before. On the second floor, again, it's our community room, our offices. There's some breakout and assembly areas, and again, there's one more leasable space upstairs there as well. Again, this is the same size and basic plan that we've been working on for some time with the 16 bays, 13 of them covered. Opening day, our needs are... We would plan to have 10 bays in use, and so we would have some that would be available for expansion, but we would be having those assigned and used. Again, these are showing what routes would be there. Again, we do have growth potential. Greyhound is not coming at this time. They have had, since we started this process, after initially declining to be part of it, have had some interest in joining us, and so we will probably continue those discussions, but at this point in time, they are not a part of this facility.
Thank you, Mr. Hume. Mr. Moan?
Yes, I just want to thank you, Mr. Hume, and Mrs. Lisa Smith, for taking time out of their weekend to answer a question I had, and I thought the answer was very, very thorough, which kind of cleared some of this money stuff up.
Mr. Colvin?
Kind of echoing Mr. Moan's comments there, Mr. Hume, you know, we've... As we were doing our research this weekend, you guys worked through the weekend to kind of make sure that we answered the questions. You know, I had sent you some about some of the construction costs. You had assured me that you've spoken with an architect and with the proposed contractor, that it wouldn't be a problem to reduce these items if they saw that they could be done in a way that didn't compromise the integrity of the project.
That's correct.
So I do appreciate that, and I just wanted to clarify that part.
Thank you.
Mr. Colvin?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve Item 9.01, the Multimodal Transit Center Construction Contract Award Resolution to Accept State Grant and Capital Project Ordinance Amendment as presented by Mr. Randy Hume.
Second by Mr. Wright. Mr. Colvin, Mr. Wright. Counsel, is there a discussion?
Jim, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, including Mr. Arp on the phone, that's unanimous. Mr. Hume, thank you for 12 years of hard work on that project. Counsel, we're at the end of the agenda. I will entertain a motion at this point.
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Moan, Mr. Wright, thank you very much. 9 o'clock.